Good evening. Welcome to the City of Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for Monday, February 27, 2023. A meeting will occur in person with the option to join remotely via Zoom or telephone, and the proceedings will be televised on LTC Channel 99. So with preliminary speaking, if you have any conversations you need to have, or if you have your cell phone, please put such your cell phone as it's done. If you have any conversations that need to be had during the course of the meeting, please take them outside and so as not to disrupt the proceedings. So with that, we'll go into continued business. ZBA 2023-1, variance for 102-108 Westford Street LLC, property located at 102-108 Westford Street, applicable zoning bylaws of Section 5.1, Section 5.31, and Section 6.1. 102-108 Westford Street LLC seeks to construct a six-unit residential structure at 102 Westford Street. The previous multifamily property on the site was destroyed in a fire. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily TMF zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the planning board per Section 11.4 to construct more than three residential units, and special permit approval from the planning board per Section 11.3 and Article 12.1 for six residential units. The proposal also requires variance approval from the zoning board of appeals per Section 5.1 for relief from minimum lot area per dwelling unit, maximum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, maximum height, minimum rear yard setback, minimum lot coverage, and minimum usable open space per dwelling unit requirements, and per Section 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-street parking requirement, and for any other relief under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Council. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you. For the record, my name is John Gary of the Law Offices of Gary &amp; Gary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant 102-108 Westford Street LLC. With us tonight is Gwen Noiz. Gwen is one of the principals of the LLC. We also have Mark Seale of Hancock Engineering. And joining us remotely tonight is Justin McFarlane. He's the other principal of the LLC, and Scott Viasek, the architect for the project. So as the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight seeking dimension relief for this project. We were before you a couple of weeks ago, and at that meeting, the board had a few concerns. So the board, we needed to tidy up the site plan a little bit more so than was presented. We had submitted the landscape plan, but you hadn't had a chance to review it. The board had a question about whether the fire department had had an opportunity to weigh in on this project. And then the board also inquired whether or not we could provide handicap access through the front of the building. So taking those concerns one at a time, with regard to the site plan, we have revised the site plan. The site plan now shows a walkway leading from the front of the property to the back of the property. It's constructed or will be constructed out of previous materials. It also shows a definitive location for the waste and recycling, which will be a screened area to the rear of the property as well. With regard to the landscape plan, so that has been submitted. Hopefully, you had a chance to review it. Now it was completed in pretty good detail. With regard to fire safety, last time I checked with DPD, which was late last week, the fire department had not weighed in on this proposal yet. But I would suggest that, you know, with the app, when the applicant gets ready to file his building permit set, if we're approved, then obviously, that building permit set will have to have all the fire safety materials in that set for the building commissioner to sign off on. I'm sure the building commissioner will not sign off on anything that's not in there. But in any event, this is a new building. It's going to be state-of-the-art fire suppression. I believe the board also had a concern about ladder access to the side elevations of the property. So the side elevations, there will be no egress windows on the side elevations of the property. So I would not expect that there would be any need for ladder access there. However, the rear and the front elevations will have egress windows, so there will be plenty of room for the fire department to maneuver around the back and the front of the property. With regard to the handicap access, so Hancock Engineering took a look at the, you know, any handicap ramping system, and we determined that with the slope from the front of the building to the sidewalk, there would be too many switchbacks to make that doable. It would really take up the entire front lawn. So at this point, we are not proposing any handicap ramping system for the front of the property. Having said that, the applicant, through its management team, has always accommodated any needs of its tenants. So we expect that to be the case here. If there's any particular need of a tenant that occupies this building, the applicant will address it through its management practices. I'd also let the board know that we were before the planning board last Thursday for site plan approval and special permit. The site plan was approved. The special permit was continued to the next planning board hearing. The primary concern with the special permit was the, the planning board members had asked us to soften the facade of the building to have more of a residential look. So I provided you with a colorized picture of the facade of the building with some landscaping surrounding it. We're still in the process of reviewing that with the design planner for the city, but we think we're headed in the right direction there. We've also provided you with a colorized landscape plan that gives you a better idea of what the landscape for the project will look like. So with that, we have our full team available. We're happy to answer any questions that the board may have. But again, this is a $3 million investment into a portion of Westford Street that could use this type of investment. There's absolutely no detriment to the character of the neighborhood with this proposal, and we meet the criteria for issuance of the variances and would request approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it. So with that said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open up to the board. Chair recognizes Member Havi. Member Havi, the floor is yours. Please.
Thank you. I appreciate the new site plans and colorized landscaping plans. They go a long way. You know, last time we were here, my concern was parking. And since that meeting, I've kind of routed my way home into work to go by this Westford Street property just to see if there is a peak time where there's going to be a large parking issue. I haven't seen that, whether it's morning, afternoon, or nighttime. You know, we can fit the four cars in front, so it's an extra eight besides the front of this property, the side streets across the street. Hopefully, they open the entrance to the MBTA garage at some point, because that's another option over there. So, you know, I, my issue with the parking, it may be a long-term issue. There's not one right now that I can really lean on with this. Just for clarification, last time we were here, I thought the project was four two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms. Is that the case?
No, it's two, two bedrooms, four three-bedrooms.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so, I mean, again, the parking's my issue. Do I want to hold up beautifying that part of Westford Street and putting a project in there that's needed? I have a hard time denying something that's needed when, like I said, I drive by and I don't see a parking as an issue. You know, if the streets were lined, we might have a different story. But I think, all things considered, the new site plans, I have a hard time saying no to something that's needed that bad in that area. It's going to spruce it up. With the project next door to it being brand-new, I think that's going to breathe some life into that area. So I'd have to, you know, depending on what the rest of the members, if they could bring something out, but I'm going to have to, at this point, approve this. I think it's a good project.
Thank you, Member Havi.
Thank you, Tim. Chair recognizes Member Briere. Member Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've favored this project right from the get-go. I've thanked the developer for their investment in the city. I continue to favor the project. I believe that the concerns expressed by some of the board members have been addressed satisfactorily, and I am pleased to support the petition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Chair recognizes Member McCarthy. Member McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask a couple of questions if I could. But I appreciate the work done in the last couple of weeks regarding the landscape plan and the revised site plan, and the vast improvement on the location of the waste receptacles. I think storing them in the back, out of the way, out of sight, is a vast improvement versus on the sidewalk area. And I think this project is wonderful. The quality of the construction is tremendous to see in this location. The first thing I'd like to ask about is the fire access that you mentioned. You suggested that there's a way of getting access in the rear of the site, but I just don't see it on the plans that we have in front of us.
Well, yeah, so what I suggested is there's more room to the rear of the property for fire apparatus, ladders to maneuver if they need to get to the back of the building, and that there are egress windows to the rear elevation as well as the front elevation. So, you know, how the fire department tackles, you know, an issue at this site, I'm not exactly sure how they'll do that. But there's, you know, there's also probably some access through Royal Street cutting across the neighbor's lawn.
What you finished with, I think, is really the only access for a vehicle. There's only five feet of dimension between the property line and the building. And as far as I know, we don't own a fire apparatus that's five feet wide or less. So I think, I just want to make sure the rest of my fellow board members understand that any rear access for fire access has to come through the adjacent property off of Royal Street, through a neighbor's site that you don't really have any agreement with, as far as I know.
We don't. But as far as I know, the fire department does what they need to do when there's a fire, and will access however they need to.
That, 100% right, but I think that the neighbor could certainly put up an eight-foot-high stone wall.
Yeah.
And then there's no access. Right. So that's why I think it's important for the fire chief to weigh in on this, or at least give us some information as to how he feels this site will be workable in the event of a fire. Did we get any correspondence?
The fire department has not provided any correspondence, no.
But were they asked to review the plans? Like, I think the engineer, so everyone saw, and we got nothing in response as to whether or not they felt there was an issue?
That's correct. We send out all materials prior to the hearing, and then after the last hearing, we sent them directly to the fire department, but did not get a response.
So no news is good news, one would think. They had the opportunity to weigh in on this. This is the second hearing we have, and they are not saying anything in opposition. So I guess I would say that it is what it is, and we'll just kind of assume that things are, you know, it's a sprinkled building, which is phenomenal. And I think that that is the first line of defense in a fire that would support lifesaving measures, anyway. So my second question is about the landscaping plan. So I'm glad we have one. But the shade tree, typical size and species, to be coordinated with DCR. So there isn't a determination to have a shade tree of a 20-foot canopy minimum with species such as, you know, pin oak or something listed.
Right.
So right now, it could be a, I don't know, something minor in nature, and we're being asked to just hope that DCR coordinates something that would be agreeable.
Well, the reason for that, so as I said, the planning board approved the site plan, and we discussed the trees at length last Thursday. And one of the concerns from one of the board members was, well, if you have a sizable tree there, you might impact the retaining wall and eventually the sidewalk. So, you know, we figured the best way to deal with that is consult with DPD and DCR and see if we can come up with a tree that works. You know, we had some suggestions, and, you know, we, you know, I don't know, you're correct. We don't know what tree's going to go there. But we are proposing a shade tree of some degree.
Okay. We do know there are several lodge trees in the vicinity, neighboring properties to this particular location. The retaining wall is all of maybe 30 inches high?
Yeah, probably. Is that right, Mark? Three feet, yeah.
Yeah. It's not a significant, I mean, if you stay 10 feet back from the retaining wall, plant a pin oak that has a 20-foot minimum canopy, and it's going to be just tremendous in that location, I don't see how you could lose.
And, you know, we're happy to do that. But, you know, the site plan that was approved by the planning board, you know, sort of left that open-ended because they were concerned. There was a concern of the planning board who is charged with reviewing the site plan.
Okay.
But we're happy to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, we would prefer a pin oak. So if that type of tree works, root structure works, we're all for it.
Between the meeting with the planning board and tonight, we didn't have any conversations with DCR, I take it?
We have not. We've been focusing on the facade of the building and trying to determine if the fire department had weighed in. There was, the meeting was Thursday night. There wasn't a lot of time.
All right. The shrubs are just listed as typical. In the back, we just have something called plant area, planting area, planted area. Is that meant to be grass, or pachycephra, or juniper, or?
So ground cover and bushes. Again, and again, we're happy to condition any approval on DPD weighing in and approving the landscape plan.
Okay. All right. I'm glad we have a landscape plan. I'll just leave it at that. But it just is a little exhausting that we don't get better landscaping information at this stage, and we're waiting on other people to weigh in on it. And we're desperately in need in this location, in this neighborhood, for shade trees. And I just wish we had an example of shade trees being proposed here, other than the fact that it's something that we'll just wait on from DCR. I've talked to DCR, and DCR is, whatever you want, we'll plant, in my opinion. That's what they've told me. So I'm kind of like, why is this an issue? All right. All right. I wish we had a botanist or somebody, or a arborist in the city that would be on staff that could weigh in on these things, preferably. All right. I will expect great things from our planning and development staff, and I'd like to condition the approval that the landscape plan will be worked out with DPD as well.
We're happy to do that.
Thank you very much. No further questions.
Thank you, Dennis. Chair recognizes Member Prokop. Member Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Good evening, Mr. Gary.
Good evening.
Yeah, I, one thing I do appreciate is the fact that, you know, there was a lot of compromise in making this effort, at least, you know, as Member McCarthy said, to have a landscaping plan. And I agree with the fellow members that, you know, this area does need, you know, sprucing up. So I ultimately think that this would benefit the neighborhood. You know, putting aside, we haven't heard from the fire department, I think there was one question, and you got to forgive me, but I know we talked, we mentioned stormwater the last meeting, and I believe you were going to meet with them the following day.
Yeah, so, yeah, they, so the engineering team did meet with the city stormwater team, and they came up with a proposal that works. I think we submitted a final stormwater memo.
Yeah, I saw the memo. I just wanted to, I saw two, so I wasn't.
So the, so revised stormwater memo dated February 21st.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry. Yeah, thank you. But again, I do appreciate the fact that you've made these efforts, especially as we talked about the recycling and the trash units. I, with that, you know, once we can resolve the landscaping issues as to which particular trees that we would want in that area, and grass, I would approve this project as well, conditioning on, you know, we have a more concise landscaping plan.
Review and approval from the DPD. Yes.
Yes.
We're agreeable to that.
Okay. All right. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, George. So, Council, you heard the wishes of the board. I mean, I'll say that I think this is a very fantastic project. I appreciate going back and providing us with further information, especially on the landscaping and the shade trees, which is very helpful. I know we had some issue, we were discussing about the handicap ramp and possibly using it so they can bring the trash down. And I understand that it's with the grading and everything, it's just not beneficial, it's just not going to work, which makes, it would be helpful, but it just, you know, I totally understand that it's just not going to make sense. But so if you're at approval of, with that condition, that approval from of the final landscaping plan from DPD, then, I mean, I'm.
We are agreeable to that.
Okay. Does any, do any other board members have any other comments or concerns? With that, can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-1 for variances at 102 to 108 Westford Street. Variances for minimum relief from minimum lot area per dwelling, maximum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, maximum height, minimum rear yard setback, minimum lot coverage, and minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, and relief from Section 6.1 for relief from minimum off-street parking requirements, with the condition that the applicant provide a landscape plan that incorporates shade trees for approval to DPD.
Second.
Motion by Member McCarthy, second by Member Briere. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve with condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve with condition.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right. Then, Council, you've been approved.
Thank you very much.
We're looking forward to the project going forward, and.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Moving on to our next item, under New Business, we have ZBA 2023-4, variance approval. The applicant is Plymouth Street House Corporation, property located at 30 Plymouth Street. Plymouth Street House Corporation has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals to demolish a single-family residence and construct a new two-family residence at 30 Plymouth Street. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily TMF zoning district, and the project requires variance approval under Section 5.1 for relief from minimum lot area per dwelling unit requirement, and any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Is petition, petition is online, I believe, or, oh, Council, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. So John Gary, again, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm representing Plymouth Street House Corporation. I'm actually requesting a continuance of this matter. There were a couple gentlemen here earlier tonight. They left, they're the abutter, and they had a couple of concerns, and would like a little bit of time to work out the concerns with the neighbor. So would like to request a continuing, continuance to the last meeting of March, if that's possible.
Okay, let's see. March, so that would be March 27th?
27th.
Yeah. February, March, unless it's a leap year, it's always, it's always the same number of days, right? It's funny how that works out. So, okay, so if anybody has any other comments or questions, ask for a motion to continue this matter to March 27, 2023.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-4 for variances at 30 Plymouth Street, to be continued to March 27.
Second.
Motion by Member McCarthy for continuance, seconded by Member Prokop. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance to March 27, 2023.
Member McCarthy.
Approve continuance to March 27.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve continuance to March 27.
Member Havi.
Approve.
Thank you, Council. I've been.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Have a great day. Stay safe.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, continuing on to New Business, we have ZBA 2023-5, variance approval. The applicant is John Sylvester. The property is located at 43 Hampstead Street, applicable zoning bylaw is Section 5.1. John Sylvester has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals to construct an attached garage to a single-family home at 43 Hampstead Street. The subject property is located in the traditional single-family TSF zoning district. The project requires variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from minimum side yard setback requirement, and any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Mr. Hammer. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. Here this evening to request a variance to the side setback at 43 Hampstead Street. John Sylvester's lived in this home for quite a while. I can't say the exact amount of time, but he's very excited to finally get a garage. He's been patiently waiting. He's contacted a number of the neighbors about this garage over time, and now he's coming forward to propose an extension off of the existing building that's shown here in bold. The rear section is 24 feet, slightly offset here from the existing building here to fill this in, and that gives him enough room to have a two-car garage. The curb cut is going to remain, and it's going to be a direct access into the garage, and then this area here is going to be modified slightly. I'll show you the elevations in a minute as well. It's going to be one-story. It's going to be 4.8 feet off the side lot line. John Sylvester has spoken directly to the woman directly next to this garage. She's, from what John has told me, fully approved of this garage to go in. He's been a great neighbor in the neighborhood and had done some outreach before this meeting, which I requested him to do. The other part of this garage is going to be a door on the other side, so if you can, wanted to pull something into the backyard for like a lawnmower or something like that, you could do that as well from the garage, which I'll show you on the elevation. So here's the existing house here, and then this is the proposed extension showing the two-bay garage. And then this is the proposed extension showing the two-bay garage. This is the side of the garage that would be seen from the right side. This is that one-story structure. This is the rear. And this is showing a way to get out of the garage, a one-bay access out the rear of the garage. Because what he's essentially doing, he's restricting his ability to get around the garage. Typically with that 10-foot setback that you would see, that's common, and this allows him to get to the back. He can get to the, the rear along this side here. It was just a, something that he's been thinking about doing with the garage to, to have that rear access. And this is the floor plan sideways. I apologize, but there's a set of stairs that comes up that brings him directly into the family room from the garage itself. So that, that's the convenience of having the attached garage is to have that access. There's gonna be no utilities proposed to the garage other than electricity. So we feel as though this variance is justified because John has gone and addressed this garage with all the neighbors. I'm gonna presume, unless someone's on Zoom, that no one's in opposition because he has gone and spoken to all the direct neighbors about this garage and didn't have any opposition from those discussions. And I can put it to the Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. So with that, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Chair recognizes member Briere. Member Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The relief requested is minimal. Staff had no concerns. Neither do I. I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Chair recognizes member McCarthy. Member McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board member, Mark Briere. I do have a question about the site plan, though.
Sure.
The site plan seems to indicate that there is a piece of the existing structure that's to remain in the area of the family room in the garage.
Here.
And in the floor plans, it's indicated as though it's new and in the elevations. The reason I say that is because any supporting wall that would have been in that existing area has been removed. So my guess is that the site plan needs to be corrected to indicate that that existing appendage on the house is being raised, as well as the deck. And I just would like to see the site plan show that.
Oh, that the existing is being raised?
Yes.
Oh, yes, we can do that, yes.
Great.
Yep, no problem at all.
Right. I think that's just something that's important to have documented. And the floor plans and site plan match.
Yep.
So as a condition, I'd just like to have the site plan resubmitted to indicate that portion in the family room area to be new construction and the existing to be raised, that whatever that room is. I don't know if it's a family room or...
Yep. It's a, it's a little entrance foyer.
Okay.
That would be coming out, so the family room can be expanded slightly.
Sounds good. And I agree it's minimal relief being sought, so I think we can look forward, I can look forward on this and favorable on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Chair recognizes member Prokop. Member Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, I echo the sentiments of my fellow board members that it's minimal relief. I would be voting in favor with the condition that member McCarthy had mentioned about updating the site plan. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, George. Chair recognizes member Hovey. Member Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thanks. I was echoing everybody else. It's, it's a minimum ask. The neighbor wasn't in opposition, or at least they didn't come and speak it or, or write it to us anyway, so I have no problem approving this.
Thank you, Tim. I, I always have one question, Mr. Hammer, about the, the rear, the rear door. It's a bay door?
Yes.
Okay. So is there, is their intention to put concrete padding underneath that bay door? Or is that just to, because it looks like, I'm looking at the rear elevation things, and there's like a little square there that, I don't know if that, is that gonna be...
It'll be a transitional apron to get out of the garage to the rear. It might be pavers. It could be wooden. I just don't think he's worked that detail out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I was just kinda curious because just, when you said back door first, I was thinking it was just gonna be a door to open up. But it makes sense to have a bay door back there, like I said, if you wanna bring out lawnmower, snowblower, or something to that effect. Although, snowblower probably be more on the, on the front end, I would've guessed.
Right. Well, yeah, yeah. It's just, it's just an added convenience, so.
Yep, so. I was kinda curious on that. So I share my fellow board members' sentiments. I think this is, the relief that's being requested is minimal. You certainly meet the criteria for variance. So I would be in favor of this. So with that, I would like to, if there's any other comments or concerns, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-5 for variance at 43 Hampstead Street for relief for a minimum side yard setback with the condition that the site plan be revised to indicate that portion of the house adjacent to the addition that needs to be raised to be corrected. Thank you.
Motion by member McCarthy, seconded by member Prokop. Can I roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve a condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve with conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Thank you so much. John would've been here this evening, but he wasn't able to make it here, so.
No worries.
Very pleased.
No, it's, it's a great project, Mr. Hammer, so thank you again for, for all your work, so. Moving on, we're gonna go to our next matter. It's a new business. It's ZB 2023-6. Variance approval. Applicant is Matthew and Shannon LaLasher. Property located at 39 Perron Way. Applicable zoning bylaws under section 5.1. Petition: Matthew and Shannon LaLasher have applied to the zoning Board of Appeals to construct a second-story addition at 39 Perron Way. Subject property is located in this suburban, single-family SSF zoning district and requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from minimum side yard and rear yard setback requirements and any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening again, Mr. Hammer.
Good evening, Chairman. For the record, Matt Hammer, Landplex Engineering, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. Here on behalf of Shannon and Matthew LaLasher. They live at 39 Perron Way. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac on the end of Perron. Well, not directly on the end, but it, the way that it terminates, they're at the end of Perron Way. They've lived in this home for quite a while. They have an expanding family. They've been contemplating expanding their existing residence in the, in the most logical way. They came to the conclusion to just simply expand the rear 12 feet by 36 feet. And a big part of this is to actually get it so that you can come out of your finished basement with a walkout as opposed to having a bulkhead door. So there's some minimal grading in order to achieve that, and I'll show you with the architectural elevations. But the goal is to expand the rear to a, an, a pre-existing non-conforming side setback of the 8.3 to propose 7.4, which is approximately a little less than a foot difference on the side, as well as on the rear to be 14.2 off the rear. This property, the way that it is situated, has a state forest piece of land here. There's a little piece of land here that goes back to the house that's actually over here, so it's not directly impacting in a butter here. Matt's spoken to his neighbors as well to let them all know about what he's doing. Has not received any negative feedback on that with those conversations. And then additionally, what happens here is there's gonna be a deck here with a walkout little patio that he can have in the back to come out of a finished basement. Instead of now, he comes up a set of stairs to a bulkhead to get out of the, the side of his house. So it's gonna greatly improve the access in and out of his house by having that open air walkout through the corner of the property here. And that's been minimally graded in order to achieve that as well. And I'll show you the elevations. So this is, uh, these are architectural plans by DeJocas Architecture. So this is the front of the house. You can't see anything there. This is looking from Perron Way, obviously. But here is where the existing roof line was, here. And then this is the expansion off the back. And then here, you're gonna see where you can come out of this walkout door and come out to a little patio area that'll be covered by the proposed deck, which also brings you out of the house out to the side. And this is a nice elevation to see that transition, how that's gonna work. There'll be a small wall here to also support the column of the deck. And then that allows for a shaded patio with a finished basement, which totally transforms the, the, the feel of the, the finished basement in the house. Looking at it from Perron Way, this'll be, you'll see the, the deck coming off the side as well as that little wall here. This is looking at, from the rear, showing this area here. And then this is looking at it from the left-hand side, and this is that walkout door that's gonna be located where the, the bulkhead is currently right now. And that's the nice thing is, is that the opening where the bulkhead is is now gonna be an opening where the walkout door is gonna be. These are just additional elevations, part of the set. Now, you're gonna go to the floor plan. So here, this is where the existing wall is here. And now he can expand the kitchen, have a pantry area here, as well as expand the family room with the deck off the, off the family room. So it's gonna greatly expand the, the living area on the first floor. Additionally, it expands the room in the master, master bath up on the second floor as well. So it's gonna be a vast improvement. Not that it wasn't great as it was, but I'm sure it's gonna be enjoyable with all this extra space for the family. And then I can take any questions from the, from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. Appreciate it. So at this time, we'll open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board. Chair recognizes member McCarthy. Member McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the relief that's being sought here is for minimum side yard and rear yard setbacks. And rear yard setback is from a Varnum Realty of, a Realty Trust. Is that a, is that a, is that a subdivision? Or what is, what is that? Mr. Hammer, Hammer, do you know what that subdivision, what that neighbor is? Is that a... Is that an area that could be developed as lots?
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Matthew LaLasher, 39 Perron Way. Member McCarthy, that is actually Rolleys Tree Farm that is behind there and has been purchased and will be conserved as part of the purchase for the Autobahn Society moving forward. That hasn't completed yet, but will remain as protected space. The existing owner, who upon completion, you know, will transfer that, has written a letter in support. I've been working with them pretty extensively to try and help that project move forward. So that cannot be developed in the area that's behind there. It will remain open space.
Thank you very much. That makes this relief seem rather reasonable from my standpoint. I had a question on, I, I feel this is nitpicking, but I just wanna just be clear. The rear elevation had grading shown that looked more like it was the 106th grade carried across, but on the site plan, it slopes down to 104 and 102. So that kind of exposes a lot of the foundation wall.
Yes, so the architectural rendering may not, it does not represent the actual grading that we, we, we did on the, on the site plan.
So the site plan would be correct, and the elevation...
The site plan's gonna be accurate, correct.
The site plan shows a gentle slope on the rear of the site.
Correct.
They'll have a fair amount of foundation wall exposed on the rear of the site, which I think is the way it is today anyway.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
In fact, the, the grading today tends to push itself towards the, the foundation. And what we've done is, is, is turn that, that flow of water perpendicular to the foundation, so of less of an impact on the basement itself.
Okay. And then the, the lot is very sizable. Required lot area, 10,000 square feet. You have 14,400 square feet of lot. Open area is very sizable, 750 square feet required, 7,500 square feet provided, so.
This is a beautiful property.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, he's got it all. He's got plenty of open space, and he's got plenty of open space around him.
Yeah. The relief is minor, in my opinion. And, and it's minor with a side yard setback that's very similar within a, a foot of where it currently exists. And the rear yard is a setback to open space. And it's not gonna be impacting anybody in the future other than maybe farmland and green space, which I think would be fine. So absolutely can support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Chair recognizes member Prokop. Member Prokop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I agree with member McCarthy. I think this, this is, it's a, it's, it's a beautiful project. It's a beautiful home, by the way. And the fact that you have a lot of open space in the back, minimal impact. I just have one question. And this is just so that, for my edification. Because in the comments here, they, it was stated that, as you said, the underdeveloped Rolleys Farm. But they also said here that residents will like, will not likely be affected by a structure that encroaches on the rear yard setback? That, is that the Rolleys Farm?
Yes.
I don't believe there are any residents that'll be impacted. It's, the only encroachment is going to the rear. The side is by less than a foot, and the neighbor is in sport.
Okay. So, and they're fine with that, right? Because, you know, you always think, what comes down the road? Because, you know, you always think, what comes down the road? And I think you mentioned that it's going to be sold, or there is some negotiations?
If it were to complete, it's intended to be retained as open space forever if that purchase is completed. The existing owner is in support right now, and there's been no opposition from the potential new owners.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Good. Again, that was my only, not concern, but just want to make sure I understood that correctly. But other than that, I think it's a viable project. It's a viable ask, and I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you, George. Chair recognizes Member Hovey. Member Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Again, this is a project with a minimal ask for relief and no opposition, so I don't have any issues with it.
Thank you, Tim. Chair recognizes Member Brier. Member Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. I agree with my fellow board members. I think this is a fantastic project. Just, I think it's going to be great for the neighborhood and great for Mr. Lashar and your family expanding. Going to have many, many wonderful years there, and I'm glad you're just continuing to invest in the city. You and your family, you know, been here forever, so I think it's just a testament to like, you know, staying, staying home and keeping, you know, keeping things going. So I think this is going to be, I certainly support this. I think the relief is minimal, and I would be heavily in support of this. So would anybody else have any questions or concerns? That being said, can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB A 2023-6 for variance for 39 Perron Way, variance under section 5.1 for relief from minimum side yard setback and rear yard setback requirements.
A second.
Motion by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Procop. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proco.
Approve.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Hammer, Mr. Lashar, you've been unanimously approved, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day. Okay, moving on to other business. We have minutes for approval for February 13th, 2023. If anybody have any questions, concerns, comments, none being heard, can I please have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 13th, 2023.
Motion by Member McCarthy to approve the minutes, seconded by Member Brier. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proco.
Approve.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
Okay, so if anybody has any other comments, Chair recognizes Member McCarthy. Member McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to mention that I saw some correspondence about upcoming administrative reviews that the planning department is going to be coordinating for some projects that I think, I think we had 12, 12 different projects that we put a condition on. Not all those projects went forward, but of the ones that are currently in the queue, we have maybe one or two of them coming up before us. Is that correct?
Yes, there's one on the next meeting, and there may be another one, but I, off the top of my head, I can't remember.
Okay, great, great. I'm glad to see that. And then I think Member Chairman Peck had asked about the appeal at 228 First Street. Is there an executive session meeting planned?
Yes, that's on the agenda for the next meeting, an executive session for 228 First.
Okay, great, great. That's all I had. Thank you.
George, did you have...
I'm going to bring up the 20 at First Street.
Okay, all right. So we'll be addressing that at the next meeting. So any other comments or questions or concerns? If none being heard, then can I please have a motion to adjourn, then?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Procop. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.